I'd like to call to order the May 7, 2018, meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Ms. Simorasty?
Here.
Ms. Coleman? Ms. Gowen? Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Here.
Ms. McFadden, T. Nicola?
Here.
Ms. Pietrobono? Mr. Rozlevich?
Here.
Be it resolved, pursuant to the Sunshine Act NJESA 104-12 and 13, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss HIV reports, discipline, and personnel matters. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJESA 104-13. Information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion to convene to closed session?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We convene our meeting here in public session. Darcy will be back momentarily. Could we stand, please, for the pledge of allegiance? The flag is behind the screen there. Linda, were there any communications other than what's listed here? Take a minute to settle down if you'd like. I'm sorry. I apologize. I didn't mean to start without you.
There was one email that came today. I'll be reporting it on the next agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Now, we're at the minutes. Let's see. Are we? This is a workshop for most purposes, no? Okay. So, I guess...
It's not on for actual board action. No board action.
No board action at all today?
No. Budget hearing.
Okay. The budget. Okay. All right. So, does anybody have any corrections to the minutes or any comments about the minutes that we should correct before the next time? I had one quick correction on policy. I believe the minutes, at least the version I read, said that we tabled the student records policy. I think we tabled the LICE policy.
Yes.
And voted in. It's correct on this agenda. It's just a typo. Yeah, so we voted, we approved student records for first reading, and we tabled LICE. And we will not be talking about LICE again tonight, I understand. Darcy? We just talked about the minutes. All right. We are now ready for the Student Representative Report. Are you guys, did you have a chance to sit down? Why prematurely started?
Okay. So, today we started Irving. Today actually kicked off Teacher Appreciation Week. Mrs. McNally, along with the PTO, have a week full of activities planned to thank their wonderful staff. The book fair, I'm sorry. The book fair sponsored by the PTO was a wonderful success last week. There were two shopping days for the kids and then an evening for parents and students to come back. And just a reminder that the Irving PTO is looking for board members for next year. The nature garden has been such a blessing to the school. All of the hard work and loving hands of the community and students have made it into a serene place to learn and explore. Students are enjoying their nature scavenger hunts and planting in the boxes. So, a huge thanks to Lowe's for the grant and hard work of Mrs. Zara and the PTO. This week, the first grade team will be hosting a movie night, show in Cocoa. All proceeds will benefit our PTO, and they look forward to a great turnout. And finally, Irving School has been working in conjunction with Sustainable HP to ban plastic bags from Stop &amp; Shop. They collected used t-shirts to make reusable bags, and the high school Glow students did the cutting and first grade after-school students did the typing. They made 100 bags, which were sent home after all, with all after-school students. The PTO also worked tirelessly on this project, and Irving had their own Earth Day event on April 29 to reveal new benches, bird feeders, raised beds, picnic tables, and much more. Master gardeners were also on hand to help fill the new beds and add organic composting. And finally, the planting was done by school children and will continue this week.
At Bartle, the Bring Your Child to Work Day had a record number of students in attendance with approximately 30 children and parents who work at Bartle or Central Office. The Bring Your Child to Work Day at Bartle is highly structured with a full day's agenda of children engaging in fun academic and social activities throughout the school day. So, all students received a certificate of participation and appreciation at the conclusion of the day's activities and events. Bartle Spring Scholastic Book Fair of the year starts the week of Monday, May 14, and goes through the 18th. They're expecting to have another huge turnout and possibly a record number of sales. Bartle's PTO will be sponsoring and engaging a teacher appreciation luncheon on Thursday, May 10. Teachers are treated to an amazing variety and amount of food, and their tummies are quite stuffed at the end of the day, Mr. Benjamin informs us. Bartle's annual PTO plant sale will be occurring the entire week of May 7 through the 11th. That's this week. This year, Bartle's expecting to have a record number of sales. Many of the proceeds go to fund academic field trips and extracurricular events like Camp Mason and other Bartle events. The Bartle Spring Walk Your Child to School Day is upcoming within the next two weeks. It'll happen on March 16. The Bartle Learn, Scape/Courtyard is being cleaned and prepared for tons of student learning experiences, the Poetry Cafe, and a host of other things during what is expected to be an amazing spring. Bartle School celebrated Earth Day by offering a rain cloud activity. The craft was designed to simulate rain pouring out of clouds. And by using blue paint, reused cotton material, glue, water, and recycled paper, children of all ages use droplets to make the clouds become heavy, and gravity caused the water droplets to fall as rain. Lindsay Fisher's fifth grade class hosted a STEAM activity for Bartle's Bring Your Child to Work Day on April 26. And currently, her class is in the middle of an environmental detective unit in science. During this unit, students are given an environmental problem that is occurring in a specific area, and their objective is to solve the problem through research and experimentation. They have actively been talking about the other forms of pollution and in conjunction with Earth Day, and they decided as a class to run a STEM activity for Bartle visitors. So, this activity was called Litter Bug, an engineering challenge, and the objective was to use recycled materials to create a litter bug. Students were given a sense of challenge rules and a table full of surprise, and from there, they used their creativity.
And then, moving on to the middle school. So, prior to Earth Day, sixth grade science classes watched the documentary Bag It and learned about how our overuse of plastic bags and plastic in general affects our environment. As an extension activity, they conducted a lunch box dissection in which they examined the packaging of their items in their own lunch or a friend's lunch and proposed alternative packaging methods that were more environmentally friendly. For the Earth Day celebration, a group of students researched facts about our water footprint along with other things people can do to reduce it and presented the information on trifle display. They also prepared a game where visitors had to match some everyday items to the amount of water used to produce them. This was a very eye-opening activity for all those involved.
Okay. We move on to the high schools. So, the high school begins AP testing this week. We started today with AP chemistry in the morning and psychology in the afternoon, and the tests end not this Friday but the Friday after that. So, good luck to all of those taking the exams. Eco Fest, which is the annual day of environmentalism at the high school, has been postponed to June 22, which is in those three days after graduation. So, the theme this year is student activism, and we look forward to hosting workshops that demonstrate to students how they can become involved. Junior prom is scheduled for March 17 at 7:00 p.m., and senior prom will be June 7. Students have staged a number of prom posals in the hallways and at the front of the school. And Mr. Lassiter wanted us to note that romance is alive and well at HPHS. Not my wording. The George Street Playhouse performed free for over 50 parents last Thursday night. Their production focused on the opioid crisis in a musical entitled Any Town. Parents and guardians who attended this production along with the presentation by the teen center, Officer Curbelo and class advisors, Ms. Mark and Mr. Roche, were able to reduce the cost of their seniors' prom by $20. The boys tennis team finished third in the county GMC tournament a week ago. Student Congress is sponsoring a food drive for the community with homeroom contributions last week and this Thursday. And finally, the classes of 68 and 78 will be donating two red maples for the front lawn as part of their reunion gifts. Details are still being finalized, but the trees should be available and planted prior to graduation.
That's it. All right. Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for the students today? All right. We will move on to Dr. Taylor's report.
Good evening. I have two things I'd like to share, but I'm going to flip-flop them since the board will be voting on the final budget. Thought I would first talk a little bit about the teen center program, and then I'll phase into the final budget presentation. So, I had the opportunity to meet with Ms. Holman, who is a social worker in the teen center, and talk to her at length about what happens when a student is referred to our teen center. So, I thought I would share in the next couple of minutes what is referred to as the intake process looks like. When a student is referred to the teen center either by a parent, guardian, another outside agency, maybe there was an issue with law enforcement, and it was suggested that we know something about what the student might need in terms of supports as a result of what happened. Or if a teacher refers to the child to the teen center, there's a very rigid process. And the very first thing that happens is Ms. Holman, Dr. Roth, or Ms. Azamoah, or one of the interns who works in the teen center. We currently have three interns from the Applied Psychology Department at Rutgers, part-time. They're not there every day. One is a master's student, two are doctoral students. The first thing that happens is the student's current living situation is considered. Is the student homeless? Is the student in a permanent residence? Students live with parents, guardians, or other relatives or friends? Academic progress is considered as well, right away. There's a profile sheet that's actually filled out on the student. So, Ms. Holman, in this scenario, would reach out to the student's teachers, call the home if there's a contact there, and talk about academic progress. Is the student struggling with homework? How are the grades? The other thing that would go into the profile from the very get is a review of any substance abuse history that might occur. That information would come mostly through interviews with the student. And what I was told by Ms. Holman is that very often, students will be forthcoming about their background. In some cases, it's not the situation, so that the information may come from some outside source, the parent, the home. I know there's some concern about the involvement of law enforcement in providing information. I was assured that Ms. Holman does not reach out to local police to get this information, particular substance abuse, for instance, history. There's also a review of any trauma in the student's life. I heard a story of one student, and I'm sure this is unfortunately common, who was sexually abused, was a very young child, moved from home to home, was sexually abused by a second, in both cases relative, second relative. That information, again, is often found by talking to the student. The interview process that helps build the profile can take a few sessions. Usually, it can take one, one-to-two-hour session, but in some cases, it could take multiple sessions. Also, the profile will take into account any suicidal or homicidal ideation. This might also have the intake coordinator, Ms. Holman in this case, looking at student records. Whenever a student expresses suicide thoughts, suicidal thoughts or homicidal thoughts, we do have to document that information because we do require a student to be assessed by a trained assessor, a psychologist. We have at least one individual in all of our schools who can conduct an evaluation of a child to determine if he or she is a threat to himself, herself, or others. But in some cases, it might mean sending a student to an outpatient care facility during the school day, if it's something that happened during the day or after school, if it happened then. And finally, the profile will include a review of what existing support systems there are. The intake coordinator will ask questions like, "Do you have friends you can rely on? Do you have family you can rely on? Who can't you rely on? Who can you trust? Who can't you trust?" So, in some cases, a student might be classified, special education, in which case, the intake coordinator will reach out right away to the case manager after the profile is built. So, first step is this one-to-two-hour or one-to-two multi-hour, multi-session series of meetings with the student to develop the profile. And then, the next step is to do some additional research. If the student is classified, the intake coordinator will reach out to the case manager to get a better read on anything that the intake coordinator should know, whether there are medical impairments that didn't come out in the profile interview, learning disabilities that could be impacting or influencing the child's behavior. The results of the substance abuse review and the trauma abuse review will sometimes lead the intake coordinator to offer or provide, try to provide, with the parent or guardians' support, more than just internal counseling. Ms. Holman is responsible for having developed a resource booklet that we published last year. It's on the front page of the website under the shortcuts page, and it includes, I think it's like the third or fourth link down, right side, under shortcuts, front page of the website. It includes things like contact information for shelters, local shelters, for therapy, therapeutic services that also can be provided to help families or guardians who can't afford the traditional route of therapy, which can be very expensive, and other supports are also listed in that resource booklet. It's about three pages. So, after the intake occurs and all this review has been done, soon after, a treatment plan is developed, and this is also codified in writing. The treatment plan includes a development of goals, and the goals are developed with the student and the intake coordinator. Again, in this case, I'm thinking that person would be Ms. Holman. In one instance, it was a situation was described by a student whose name was withheld for obvious reasons. Student was also having trouble besides with behaviors, coming to school. So, one of the goals in the student's case was simply to get that child to come to school. The intake coordinator, in this case, Ms. Holman, realized, "Well, you have to have attachment to something in school." You know, in some cases, it's physical. I mean, you just can't get up, or you don't have supports around you to drive you if you're late, missed the bus. But in other cases, as was the situation with this particular student, it's social-emotional. It has to do with not having social connections or having some emotional disconnect with the school. And so, one of the goals that was created for this particular student had to do with just creating relationships between this student and other students, between this student and adults. And Ms. Holman said, "You know, look, I was able to develop a relationship with the student," and she thinks that may have helped this particular student come to school more often. In the end, by the way, this is a student whose intake occurred back in the fall. The particular student who was described to me didn't make progress. In fact, Ms. Holman felt the progress was "amazing," and she actually identified specific goal achievements for me. So, I'm looking at the actual intake form, and I think I've described everything. I should also mention that the intake form includes, I'm sorry, the action plan, the treatment plan includes a progress report. So, from time to time, the intake coordinator will check the status of the student's progress. So, that way, the student graduates, moves on to another grade, and works with a different counselor. The counselor has a record of progress. So, that is what happens when a student is formally referred for services. Now, that doesn't include the drop-in kids. We have lots of kids, I was in the teen center last week, who just drop in. They hang out. I walked in, there was Bella, Ms. Holman's dog, therapy dog, and was, you know, on a lap of one of the students who just needed some time to decompress. There are other times, I was told by Ms. Holman, that students will drop in just to chit-chat with a counselor. They may not have a formal treatment plan because they weren't referred for those services. In terms of numbers, I was told there are currently about 40 students who have treatment plans, formal treatment plans, who are getting regular counseling from our teen center crew. And next year, we'll continue with our interns. We've already selected those who will be joining us. This year, we had a lot of males. We'll have more, we'll have a better, I think, gender balance. It wasn't intended, but I was told that we actually selected almost an equal number of female and male interns. So, I can take any questions, or if you have any comments, please share. Any questions I can't answer, I'll get back to you about.
I have one. So, just in terms of parents who refuse care for any kind of like cultural reason or particularly immigrant families who are from another country where mental health services aren't, are generally frowned upon, are there any resources provided to them that kind of explain the situation?
That's a great question.
And then, another follow-up, is that resource packet that you mentioned translated into different languages so that parents are able to read it?
I'm going to get back to you about that one. That's a great question. I can tell you that, in my conversation with Ms. Holman, that came up. Although the issue didn't center on religious objections, it had more to do with, you know, somebody who's resistant to the idea. She, so, for instance, if a student is referred for the intake process, but during the intake just refuses to provide answers and says, "You know what? I'm not, this is not for me," Ms. Holman says that she will, she'll provide a pamphlet about the teen center's support services to the student, and then check on the student sometime later. She didn't indicate how much later. It could be weeks, it could be a month or so. But she did say she follows up to see if now they might be ready, the student might be ready for counseling services. I had a situation recently in middle school, a student who was acting out. We strongly encouraged the parent to help, to have us help the student with the teen center support. Parent really was reticent, resistant, not even reticent, resistant. Finally, after repeated behavior problems, the parent came around. I think other players happened to help in that area. For instance, Ashton Burrell, who we all know, has a mentorship program embedded in our school. He was able to step in and, you know, as a semi-outsider to the parent, say, "Look, you know, this is good stuff. Trust me. I've been there. I was a student here. I used to use the teen center." So, we've been using supports like that when we can. But I'll get back to you about the language. That's a great question. I'll try to report back next Monday.
No, you were first. So, I'm wondering about students that do or, you know, don't feel comfortable in the teen center. Do you feel that we need a certain amount of diversity among our counselors and interns? And do we have that amount of diversity? I mean, I can imagine that some students, I mean, I don't, might feel more comfortable with, you know, it'd be great if we had somebody who was, say, an African-American man, or, I mean, I realize this is asking a lot, and also that not every student is going to care. But do we have, are we able to offer any sort of diversity?
That's something to consider. So, if you look at the demographics of the three full-time members?
Right.
Two are African-American, actually, one is African, one is African-American, one is Caucasian, two females, one male. Nobody of Hispanic origin, although one of our interns happens to be of Hispanic origin. But maybe it's something we need to be more mindful of? What other type of, when you were thinking of that, were you thinking of diversity beyond ethnic or racial diversity?
I mean, I guess I was ethnic, racial, slash, cultural. I mean, we've talked about students who, for whatever reason, their parents were very reluctant to have them engage in services. Maybe they were concerned about stigma, possibly legitimate concerns about African-American kids being stigmatized by being labeled, or, and I'm wondering if the teen center feels welcoming to students like that. And I realize, you know, the racial identity of the counselor is far from the only issue, but I don't know. Would that help encourage people to come in if they had somebody that they felt was part of their community, or is that really simplistic?
It's worth a follow-up of Ms. Holman to see what she has to say.
If people are not signing up, possibly because of that?
Yeah. If she feels like there is that lacking.
Right.
I mean, so, we have two variables with which to work. One is the interns, right?
Right.
They change every year.
Sure.
So, that's where we might be able to find diversity.
Yeah.
Outside of what we have now. And the other variable is the work we're likely going to be doing with Rutgers University Behavioral Healthcare. We're bringing in, not an intern, additional support in licensed clinical social worker one day a week. Maybe that person could represent a certain segment of population you think might be reticent?
I'm just thinking that Ashton has been effective with students that are sort of, some students that are disaffected, and part of that may be that they see, "Oh, Ashton is someone I can emulate. Ashton is like me." I mean, it might not be that he's black, but that he's, you know, he's a minority student, he's very successful, you know. So, yeah, I'm just wondering if that is the cause of many students being resistant or if it has really no impact at all. And I guess my other question, real quick, if you don't mind, Monique, we have a protocol, right, if a student doesn't want his parent contacted, are we able to provide that student with supports? If the student says, "I have a really big problem with my parent, please don't call them," can we make an action plan or something of that nature?
So, that the student still sees support if the parent doesn't allow for that?
No, if the student doesn't want, say, the student is going through transgender transition or something, it doesn't want the parent to know, or isn't ready for the parent to know. How is that handled at the teen center?
That is a good question. You know, my thought is initially that it's, for liability reasons in part, helpful, if not necessary, to have a parent sign off on counseling services that are provided.
Right.
But that doesn't mean that Ms. Holman couldn't talk to a student who has a question about teen pregnancy.
Right.
Something along those lines, but doesn't want to, you know, confide in a parent. I'll follow up with more information about that.
I'm sure she has a good way of handling it, or, you know, talking to the parent without revealing every detail that was, you know, shared or whatever. But, yeah, I'd like to hear more. Thank you.
By the way, I know Monique has a question before I get to it. I'll be sure to get back to Olivia and you, Anna, if other questions come up, that I can't answer those as well. Next Monday, and under old business.
Oh, great.
I'll follow up with the answers.
Thank you.
I think my question kind of falls in line with what was raised earlier about, because I really appreciate the explanation of the formal process, but what I'm trying to understand is let's say a parent is concerned that their child will be somehow labeled formally, right, either targeted for special education services. That cannot happen through the formal process, correct? Like, can it ever happen that a child who is not classified can become classified as a result of being approved for?
Oh, no, 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 no. That's a great question.
Because I think that's a very big misconception that a lot of parents have about, you know, going through this process with teen center, and I need, there needs to be clarification as to how separate this really is.
The same ethical standards have to apply as they apply to teachers in these circumstances. It is not appropriate for a teacher, a support person, anybody outside of the protocol we use, to approach a parent and say, "Hey, I think your child should be recommended for services."
A teacher can't say that if they notice like a learning disability?
What's that?
I think what I'm asking, though, is let's say a parent is reluctant about approving their child to go through this process because they're concerned that as a result, they will be then placed in the system.
Oh.
Formally leave.
Oh, that's interesting.
Right. Not necessarily that it comes from a teacher recommending it, but just that this process is actually aligned with that. And I think, I know that there are parents who associate, they feel like that's a potential to happen, and they're really reluctant about having their child getting caught up in that service system, right? But from what I'm hearing, that does not happen, it cannot happen from the teen center's initiation.
I'm not aware of it happening, but it's still a valid question for me to bounce off of Ms. Holman.
Right.
I mean, what checks and balances are there to make sure it doesn't happen in the future?
Well, and also, I mean, if you know actual parents, I have that confusion. I think we need to make it clear somehow. I don't know if, you know, in that brochure that is provided to students, that, you know, there'd be a little asterisk that says, "This is not special education. This is separate. This is not part of the school's child study curriculum classification system. This has nothing to do with special education." I mean, I don't know.
It's not for diagnostic purposes.
Not for diagnostic purposes.
It's probably an important point, like, we're not, we don't, we're not bringing you here to, you know, evaluate you against diagnostic criteria.
Oh, you have that too. Right, right.
It really is a support. And I think that was my next question, was I really think this needs to be communicated. What we're hearing tonight, and what Anna's just following up on, how to clearly talk about what the teen center does, what it doesn't do, you know, what it provides, and how it really is a safe space for the students. And I don't think that message is coming across to many parents who have concerns, rightfully so. So, whatever way the teen center can communicate that, really, you know, push it hard to the parents who need to hear that message, and maybe even the students. Maybe there are some students who don't quite get that either.
Great point.
And then, is it only for the high school students? I'm still, is it, can also middle school students tie in at any?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. We were discussing at the Discipline Committee meeting last week about, you know, having having some sort of introduction to the new discipline code along with restorative practices. I think bringing in the teen center, having, you know, some sort of open house situation with a lot of Q and A would be, you know, really good stuff, and then, I don't know, I guess the beginning of next year.
You think we could wrap this in as well?
Yeah, I think it's all related, and I think it's, you know, very important information that we haven't successfully communicated thus far. I don't think that, when, when my kids transitioned from Barrow, I don't think we had any introduction formally to the teen center, right?
That's a good point.
But I would also add that I think it should be probably separate from discussions about discipline code and school policy, you know what I mean? Like, two separate forums, right? Just kind of teen center night or something, whether it's related to restorative practice, which is more in line with what the teen center does as opposed to...
I agree.
It'd be great for students to know, and parents to know, this isn't something that goes on your record, right? It's not like a disciplinary infraction, you can look up on Genesis, right? It's confidential, it's, you know, it's a therapeutic...
Oh, it's definitely not Genesis, but, the question still stands that I'd like to have answered, well, what keeps the kids from getting caught up in the system?
Right.
And so I'll get back to you.
That'd be great. And also on how we're going to, how we can maybe do a better job of informing parents. I had no idea this was a source of confusion.
Yeah, I mean, they're totally separate from the child study team members.
Absolutely.
There's no crossover whatsoever between child study team and teen center, so I guess that needs to be made very clear.
Yeah.
It's not like people from, folks from the teen center go to CST meetings, or...
Correct, absolutely not.
Funded separately, it's, you know, everything about it is...
But the bigger question to me, whether it was spoken yet, is, well, what record-keeping do we maintain, and how, and what is shared? I mean, it comes back to the conversations we've had about law enforcement, and what's shared with them.
And what are the possible implications?
Anything for a student under 18 is accessible by parents. I mean, parents can request any school records, and that does include teen center records. I mean, it...
Right, but aside from the parents, right? Like, what are the implications of that?
Yeah, but I would think it wouldn't be available to anybody else.
Like a teacher, let's say, right? Let's, let me find that out, maybe you'll share your view of that. Get back to you during All Business next week. So then with that, I'm going to move to my next topic, which is about the budget. I'm not going to go into great detail over the budget again, because very little has changed, if anything, I think just two lines, which I'll point out in bold print, have changed since the preliminary budget. So a reminder that we spent quite a bit of time, starting in December, meeting with groups of people. Every leadership team member had to vet the budget, not only with me and Ms. Hoffela, but with the board finance committee. We, the board of finance committee and I, just wrapped up our last meeting with the community, and that happened on April 30th. It was a wonderful interaction with mostly orthodox members of our community at the congregation that's on South First Avenue. Tonight is the final evening for comment from the public, and for me to share any changes that may have occurred from the preliminary to the final phase, because the board will vote on that budget, and it will be presented to the Department of Education this week. Once again, the major changes we had to consider as we developed the budget included increased special education costs, continued uptick in our out-of-district costs in particular, a great number of, a greater number of homeless families who we are supporting, were up to 18 students who were considered homeless. We were in the single digits last year. I talked about the McKinney-Vento Law and how that might be impacting our numbers in my last presentation. Just a reminder to the community and the board, the, the school district of origin for a student who might be domiciling, not permanently residing, but domiciling, homeless in another district, another community, is responsible to transport that student back to the district of origin if he or she wants to continue education in the district of origin. Otherwise, we have to pay tuition to the district in which the student is temporarily domiciled. So we're incurring greater costs in transportation because of that. Our state health benefits went up, and we saw a very insignificant increase in state aid, under $100,000. So when I first presented the expenditures slated for next year, we were looking at salaries ranging in the seven, almost the even $17 million range, which is an $826,000 uptick from last year. The, the new budget, the latest version of the budget, I should say, saw some slight variation in those numbers, about $20,000 we see now in having to expend on, on salaries. That was partly as a result of just making sure we updated all of the steps that teachers may have been going on now that we're moving into the next year. So it was just really making sure we're crossing our teeth and dotting our i's and getting our information accurate. By the way, changes to expenditures and revenues did not impact the bottom line at all. The impact on the taxpayer remains the same. I'm going to go over that last slide again before I'm done. Here again is the specific number I was referring to. The increase in our out-of-district tuition and transportation is a little over $263,000 from last year, so we're consistently increasing costs, incurring costs for tuition of these students, and that includes their, their transportation. Now, when you look at salary, I'm sorry, when you look at salary changes in the last presentation, I, I had numbers that showed you exactly the numbers of teachers that were having to add to the staff, and I'm going to come back to that slide, I think I missed it, so, go back to my computer in a second and make sure that I present that. But I do want to add some new information that I didn't share in the preliminary budget, and that's the impact that budget cuts had because of the drastic increases in expenditures to staffing. We did eliminate two positions. All the individuals who were impacted by these positions have been notified. The administrative assistant secretary in the central office, my office position, has been eliminated. The database specialist position has also been eliminated. That's the individual who would maintain our student information system. Our website would develop data sheets from time to time when, when I would ask for the information, like demographic breakdowns. This person is also responsible for state reporting. We're going to be redistributing responsibilities from both of those positions to existing staff. We also had to reduce in force, let go of three positions as a result of a change in student enrollment. Our grade two class is quite small. Our numbers in those classes is on average about 17 per class. Going into third grade, we're going to eliminate one section that we offer, we had six sections, we're going to come down to five. Still means our class sizes will be likely no more than 21 in a class unless we get busloads of people enrolling who we didn't anticipate in our schools. The change in IEPs and the move up in the middle school of students from one grade to the next has allowed us to close a section, a few sections of middle school special education classes, so we were not in need of a middle school special ed teacher. And finally, we had a paraprofessional supporting the librarian in the middle and high school, that position was also cut. Now fortunately, because of various internal maneuvers, none of the folks who were actually in those three positions that were riffed are losing their jobs. We have places for them internally, so we'll be able to, to keep all our good staff. I want to talk about revenue, and then when I'm done, I'll come back to that slide that I somehow pulled out about personnel, monetary expenditures for personnel. This is our revenue stream, you can see again, the state aid is under $100,000. Had we been fully funded, it would have been closer to about $400,000. I'm ballparking the number, but you get a sense of just how short we are in state aid. We made some changes since the last version of my budget presentation. We are going to add, we're going to take a little bit more, we're going to, we're going to put a little less into reserves, like capital reserve and maintenance reserve, so we have a little bit more in what's referred to as fund balance, that's the money left over, after we have exhausted our needs for this year that we can use to offset the taxes, the tax levy going into next year. Here's a, here's a reflection of that change. It's roughly a $50,000 difference. So in other words, we're going to be putting an additional 50, we're going to be not putting $50,000 more in our reserves than we had anticipated. Reserves are used, reserve accounts are used to pay for large-scale projects. Capital and maintenance reserve in particular might support such big projects like the replacement of a roof, the famous scenario that the, that leaders learn in the graduate programs is, a boiler goes in the middle of winter, you got to go out and get a boiler. Well, you would tab your reserve accounts to do that, but we are very comfortable, finance committee and Ms. Hoffela and I, that we have plenty in reserve to cover devastating events if they were to occur. We also made a change to the, the other category. Other covers additional facilities income, sometimes we'll have a group come in and want to use the high school stage. We shorted ourselves a little bit in the area of the other revenue that we're generating on the preliminary side. But we still have a, what is considered a zero balance budget, which means our expenditures equal our revenues. I am not going to go over every line. We discussed the tax impact on us, the resident. It hasn't changed since the preliminary budget. It remains the same, the, the tax levy, the percent of taxes assessed to the resident is still 4.03%. None of those numbers have changed. I also explained in my preliminary presentation how we are able to increase taxes beyond the 2% cap that most of us are familiar with. Well, we can do so because there is an allowance for school districts to adjust the tax levy to accommodate the exorbitant costs that are constantly barraging us in the area of healthcare. All the information, including the user-friendly budget, will be, which will be updated, correct? Okay, go ahead.
Within 48 hours.
In the next two days.
In the next two days. So by, let's see, by Thursday morning, it'll be there.
Okay, great. Thank you. That'll all be up on the website we've set up. If you go to the very front page, hpschools.net, I've set up a news item at the very top that gives you all this information, including my presentation. There is just one more slide I want to show you that was mysteriously deleted from my presentation. It's the same slide I showed for the preliminary presentation I made. And that is a more detailed breakdown of the, the costs we're incurring for salary. Contractual obligations include such things as yearly increases to staff salaries, they also involve what we refer to as Schedule B, or extracurricular activity stipends. The contract with the Teachers Association and Secretaries Association, Parents Association was resolved after the last budget was developed. So there were some unanticipated additional costs that we incurred due to those contractual obligations. That's all in that $604,000. We did also have a number of needs to increase staff, and I'm not going to go over the details, I did that for the preliminary presentation. In a nutshell though, has a lot to do with the, the numbers of younger special needs students coming to Irving, and us having to open up another section of a class, also some change in enrollment of the upper grades, middle and high school in particular, that called for us to open up or expand, create new sections of certain, of classes so we can keep our class sizes down. Whenever that happens, we are obligated to compensate staff for the additional courses they're teaching, so that's all wrapped up in staff increases. The staff savings, you know by now, I showed you that other slide, have to do with the three positions we riffed, we reduced in force, and the two we eliminated. You know, just speaking to that before I, I close things out, it's very, very difficult for somebody in my position to have to deal with a $1.2 million budget deficit, which I was confronted with when, after I met with all the principals, and we, we balanced, we flatlined all the building budgets, we, we took as much blood from the stone as we could to have to then make up $1.2 million. And also accommodate some additional needs for security at the high school, hence the addition of an assistant principal position that we're adding to the high school. To do all that, something had to give, and that's why we had to look to some staff changes. But again, I'm very happy to report that we're not going to be losing anybody from our current staff despite those changes. And I can explain that if there are any questions in public or from the board. Mr. Krieger, Finance Chair, did I cover everything, or is there anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to add is the, the difference in the bottom line for the average household, which went from 70 some odd, went from 70 some odd dollars this year to approximately $250 next year, is almost entirely because of the timing of a refinancing of a bond obligations, with payments last year being less than full because we refinanced, and extra payments this coming year. And that's why Dr. Taylor showed a average of $161 for the two years, as opposed to the 70 some odd and the 250. Otherwise, the two budgets are very comparable, other than that the, the, a small, small increase from 3.7% to 4.03%. So it's, it's a large budget, it's something that struck me looking at it, as I, as I do look at it over the months, we're dealing with a $36 million budget, it's more than 60% of the budget for the, or the tax, taxes for the, for the, for the borough and the Highland Park resident pays for the borough taxes, county taxes, library taxes, and school taxes, school makes up over 60% of that. So it's a, it's a large number, but I, I think we're, with our administrators, we're in good hands, and we're moving forward in a positive way. So Scott and Linda, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions for, for Scott, or on the budget, or? No?
Okay. So the way we have this structured on the agenda is, we have a public comment session dedicated specifically to the budget, so if anybody here tonight wants to go up to the podium and give us any feedback about the budget, now would be the time to do so. But that would be specific to the budget and not any other agenda items. Nope, I don't see anybody running to the podium. So we will go to the resolution to adopt the 2018-2019 budget. Can I get a motion to adopt the 2018-19 budget?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? No? Linda, do you want to read the, read that in, or?
I don't think it's necessary.
No, okay. All right, so then we'll just take a roll call.
Okay. Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Imarasty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, D'Nikola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslovich?
Yes.
All right, and there you have it. There goes our 2018-2019 budget season to a close. So I want to
Thank you.
Want to repeat Mark's thanks for Linda and Scott and all the work that they've put in this, into this in the last six months. And I know that included some sleepless nights of how are we going to get from 1.2 million to balanced? It's not a fun process at all, but I think we did it with the minimal impact on students that we conceivably could, and with hopes towards hopefully some additional funding coming from other sources next year, other than the taxpayers. To that end, I've been attended, invited to attend a To that end, I've been invited to attend a meeting tomorrow in Trenton with organizations across the state and advocates across the state specifically about school funding. So if I learn anything fantastic, I will let everybody know. There'll be some really much better minds on this than mine in the room tomorrow, so I hope I get some really good information to bring back to everybody, because I have to say there are still bits and pieces of this that I don't completely understand. Those numbers that were put out a few weeks ago, where if we were fully funded, we'd get about $400,000, but if there was this uncapped aid that we could potentially get, we would have gotten over a million. I still don't understand the uncapped versus capped, so I'm hoping to get more clarification on that. And then, you know, if there's something we can do to advocate for that uncapped, heck yeah, I'm all for that because...
We discussed that at the Middlesex County School Boards meeting last week, and unfortunately, no one really knows exactly where it's going.
Right.
But a lot of people felt like a lot of our elected politicians were going to hunt with it and kind of just see, you know, no one really knows how they're going to, how it's going to fall out, because there's just not the money to fully fund everything. And, you know, equity issues come up, and you have districts where they're only paying like 35% of their bill as compared to other districts where they're paying 65% of their bill and their tax burden. So there's so many variables that go into it. You just, you know, every time I go to one of these, specifically on the budget, it sort of makes your head spin because you learn a little bit more and you understand it a little bit deeper, and then you realize that there are so many different components to it that it's a very difficult scenario that all the different districts in the state has gotten us into at this point.
Right. And we have one of the better funding models. I mean, of course, it's not being fully funded, but, you know, we can see the teacher strikes going on all around the country because in so many states, teachers are so drastically, remarkably underpaid, you know? At least we don't have that going on in New Jersey, but we're not, you know, we're not getting the help from the state that we, that we generally need. And there's still talk of money being redistributed before the state budget is finalized, so we could have a scenario like we had last year where all of a sudden a couple hundred thousand dollars falls out of the sky after we finalize this budget. So who knows? We'll keep everybody posted.
Ever hopeful.
Ever hopeful, exactly. But thank you very much to the rest of Finance Committee and to Scott and Linda for getting us through this relatively unscathed again this year. And thank you, of course, again, to all of the taxpayers of Highland Park for continuing to support the public schools. It was one of the really remarkable things that happened at the meeting that we had last week at the synagogue. We got a lot of support and a lot of real vocal support for public education, a lot of real understanding that even though there may be segments of our community that don't utilize the public schools, they still see the benefit of the public schools, and that's huge. That is absolutely, positively huge. So we very much appreciate everybody's, everybody's commitment to our public schools, whether they send their children to our schools or not. So I just wanted to make a point to say that. So thank you, everyone. So we will move on to our Board Committee reports and recommendations, starting with curriculum and instruction with Michelle.
So because of all of the activity on the budget, we did not meet this time around. But there are two items on the agenda, and number one is, as usual, the resolution to approve field trips. And number two is the resolution to approve the HIV incident report for the month of March.
Okay. Thanks. Shortest agenda I think I've ever seen for curriculum and instruction.
Enjoy it now.
Does anybody have any questions about the non-existent curriculum and instruction agenda? Okay. So we'll move on to finance and facilities with Mark.
Yes, and the finance agenda is the smallest finance agenda I've ever seen. There's only three items. They're the bill lists, the travel and related reimbursement expenses, and the resolution to approve renewing our dental insurance with Delta Dental, and that's it. We did meet before this board meeting. The major item we discussed was the reregistration of students in the district, and we'll be talking about that during Old Business later this evening.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. Personnel, I realize we don't have Judy here. Ruth or Ann want to walk in?
Wow, that was quick.
We decided that at the beginning.
No, we did. You're right.
That went with everything but a finger point.
I was still hopeful, though, you know? You might want to...
I'm a newbie on this committee, so I'm not ready yet.
Barely able to articulate it. Okay, personnel, numbers one and two, those are the three riffs and the two position eliminations that Scott talked about already. Now we have all this sort of annual rehiring and, yeah, rehiring, reappointment of staff. Number three, we have the appointment for the fall, for the next year of non-tenured professional staff, that's non-tenured teachers whose contracts are being renewed. Then we have, I should have just printed this out. Let's see. I think I missed a category. Can I look at your paper copy for a moment, please, Darcy? Oh, thank you. My computer's giving me trouble. It's all weirdly formatted. Okay, number three is non-tenured teachers whose contracts are being renewed. Number four is the renewed employment of tenured professional staff, tenured teachers, who are obviously, again, being hired for the coming year. Let's see. Number five is the employment of tenured 12-month office staff. Number six is what it says it is, the employment of non-tenured 12-month staff, all for next school year, starting July 1st. Seven, employment of non-tenured 12-month administrators. Eight, employment of 10-month non-tenured administrators. Pretty much speaks for itself. Nine, 10, 11, 12. Okay, here we go. Thirteen is noting that we're going to rehire Linda or continue hiring Linda. Most of this is self-explanatory. Fourteen is a para-transfer from one school to another. Number fifteen is extra hours for Ms. Dawes. Number sixteen, an extra hour for a para. Number seventeen, extra hours for a CST case manager. I guess we've just had, what's going on? We just had more IEPs than we expected, or we've had greater loads, Scott? So Mr. Almjar will be doing some extra work, which we appreciate. Let's see. Keith Presti will be doing some PD work. We have some resignations. We're sorry to see Jean Blevins go from Irving. Thank you for your service, Ms. Blevins. We're sorry to see Julie Ake, is it Akeul or?
Akeul.
Akeul?
Akeul.
Akeul, okay, I'm sorry. I never knew how to pronounce it. We're sorry to see her leave. Stacy Fankel also. Twenty-two is a non-renewal of an employee. Twenty-three is our usual approval of the list of source for teachers, substitute teachers for the remainder of this year, or at least for the, I'm not sure if this is a monthly thing for this month. We have a math teacher who is, oh, this is actually really good news. Scott might want to talk more about this. We have a teacher who will be moving into the Irving Primary School to take the part-time media specialist position, and I believe she will be taking classes to achieve, I think initially, an emergency certification and eventually her media specialist certification.
Yep.
Did I get that right? Okay.
She has to take three classes over the summer. She's already enrolled.
We have somebody who's very enthusiastic, which is just wonderful.
Very interested, yeah.
I can't, I'm so glad that we have someone who's going to be professionally certified to be in that position.
Judy's very happy about it, too.
That's, yeah, I bet Judy is, yes.
Well, I should also add that she endorses it because she, she's very, she knows the rigor of the Rutgers program.
Oh, it's a Rutgers program, okay.
Which is one of the best around, so she's very pleased.
Well, I am also very pleased that we are not going with a sort of temporary, non-certified person to just sort of police the media center. We're going to have an actual librarian, and it's, it's great that this employee was so willing to dive in. Twenty-five, our technology support guy. Let's see, number twenty-six, administrative leave. Ah, and that is it. Let me go back to my notes on the personnel meeting. Probably didn't need to read through all of that stuff in such detail. We met on May 1st. Let's see, if there's anything that I did not discuss that we need to discuss. Well, ongoing is, actually, I don't know where in the process we are, but we have two positions for which we're doing interviews, right, for the, do you want to, is...
Correct. It is.
We have a maternity leave position for our assistant principal at the middle school, and that will be a full-time replacement maternity position?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll start in November and take us through June.
Great. That's a full-time administrator just for the middle school?
Correct.
Okay. And we're also interviewing for a full-time assistant principal who would be assigned to the high school. Scott, where are we in that process?
So we had about 238 applicants.
Yes.
We screened them down to 10. We're interviewing Wednesday and Thursday. A committee will be involved, including student, students, parents, teachers, supervisors. The second round will be May 15th, and that will involve the Personnel Committee.
Wonderful. Thank you for letting us be there to, you know, see what's going on, maybe ask a few questions. One second. That's all I have. Thank you, Scott.
All right. Thank you, Darcy. Does anybody have any questions for personnel?
I actually wanted to ask about the screening process for the new hire at the high school for the vice principal position, the screening process. You know, if you could give us a kind of overview about what it entailed.
Sure. So Mr. Lassiter and I were responsible for screening the resumes. We each did a blind review. We did it in rounds. So the first round had us taking the 238 down to about 30. We then met, we compared notes to see if what, where there were overlaps. Surprisingly, we were on the closer page than I expected. I say surprising because I'm the central administrator, I see a different picture than a building administrator might, but from that, we were able to pull 10 of the 30 that we each brought to the table. Now, the 10 will be taken down to a party of four, of semi, four semifinalists, who the Board, Personnel Committee, and Mike and I will then interview. Then two or three candidates will be presented to me as finalists, and my goal is to come to the Board June 4. I believe that's our meeting, the 4th, with a recommendation, and then we'll vote on the 11th.
So do we go into interviews like that with already saying what the salary range is so that we don't get to the position where we're like, we're at the end with the candidate we love and the salary's too low?
Awesome question. Yeah, so the finalists, so part of the process of me interviewing the finalists, besides, you know, putting through a grueling hour-long interview, is at the end to go over the details. I talk about salary, benefits, vacation days, timeline, professional support. I do it all. And I usually give the finalists an opportunity to get back to me if he or she has concerns about the salary. But the salary is pretty lock-set. We're bound by contract. A lot of the people, I think almost all the 10 candidates we're interviewing, don't have prior administrative experience, so they're starting on the first step.
All right, so we should be good. All right. And I believe that our administrative salaries are pretty darn far.
Yeah, I think 90 is the starting salary for assistant principal.
Great. All right. Any other questions on personnel? No? All right, seeing none. Ann, still you.
Policy, very exciting. We're seeing number 8330 again, student records. At the next meeting, I will be moving that we adopt that policy as amended in several places to ensure that we are not collecting, unnecessarily collecting data on where students were born, on whether they're born in the United States or elsewhere, for the protection of our potentially undocumented students.
Okay, great. And do we have a timeline idea for when we'll see some of, see the LICE policy come back to us, or...
I think Scott was going to, was going to confer with staff and other administrators and see sort of where we were going with that. Do you know where we are in that process?
I'm trying to get it done by Wednesday. We have a meeting on Wednesday.
Yes, I forgot to mention that, yes.
So by June, we might have a second version.
Great.
Cool, good. So there'll be, I think at least four meetings at which the LICE policy will be presented, the proposed LICE policy, so lots of time for people to come out and chat about LICE if they're so inclined. Or send us emails.
It's all sit in the room and itch so much harder. Okay. Monique, equity and excellence.
We have not met yet in May, so we will be meeting, date to be determined.
Okay.
In the next week or two, two weeks. All righty. Okay, so let's see, that brings us to public comment. If anybody would like to make a public comment on any other board items or any other topic, now's your time. Nobody's running to the podium, okay. So we will, we don't have any, we're not moving any items this evening, so that's good. So let's see. So that brings us to the President's Report, which I don't have anything specific, but I did want to kind of give a follow-up to the meeting that we had. Oh, good grief, what was the day? What day did we have our?
Two weeks ago.
Was it almost two weeks ago? No. Was it last?
It was the end of the year.
Not last Tuesday, the Tuesday before. What was the date of our meeting?
The school security.
Yeah.
Moving forward to implement restorative practice.
Wow, do you have the whole title? Go ahead.
Well, no, that was, that's actually only part of it.
24th, right?
It's increasing school's security while moving forward to implement restorative practice. I wrote, helped write the announcement for it over the last week. Yeah, it was...
It's 24th.
Yeah, it was last Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah, it's almost two weeks ago. Almost two weeks ago. Anyway, I just wanted to follow up. First, thank the HPEA for the tasty dinner that you guys provided to everybody. I think that was a huge draw. And to also thank...
We had one babysitter, two babysitters?
Two babysitters. Two babysitters. Thank our babysitters as well. I think it really, I think it really helped to be able to provide folks childcare and to provide dinner. Of course, the hysterical thing is that it was like, everybody's like, well, where's dessert? Like now, now that we've like updated to babysitting and dinner, it was like, come on, people, some coffee and a Danish or something. Like, come on, let's get it. So funny. So now we need, now we need a third sponsor to bring dessert next time.
We're stopping at massage chairs, that's it.
She said we're stopping at massage chairs. We could have used it. But it was, it was a tremendous crowd. We, I was blown away by the number of folks that came out. The entire board was there, so thank you to every, thank you also to all of the board for coming and participating. And I think some really positive, productive conversations were had, some difficult conversations were had. It gave you a lot of information to continue to move forward and also for us to continue as, you know, we move into summer and next year into another strategic planning update, tweak, whatever we want to call it, and some really good guidelines, I think, for moving forward with these, you know, this additional hire for the assistant principal and for this position that we're looking to put into the high school, beginning in September, to have, you know, an extra person in those hallways, how that role is going to get fleshed out, what those persons' jobs and responsibilities are going to be, how we craft that, how we craft that job description. So I just want to thank everybody again for their, for their input there.
I'll also add, if you look at the screen, you'll see that Susan Odada took all of the post-it notes, notes that were provided, I think we refer to that as our news section, and by table, she bullet-pointed them. First, she listed the question that was posed, she bullet-pointed them for each. And so the District Safety Committee, which meets in two weeks, is going to pour over this information. What I will do for the Safety Committee is pull out a lot of the data we got around the school liaison officer, that's Officer Joe, and what we, at the time, we're calling the Youth Development Coordinator, that's the extra hand we would like in the halls of the high school, and use this information. I promised that group we would use it, and here it is.
And one of the really interesting things that came out of it for me was this idea that you and I discussed, and we discussed at the table that I was at, which is that we get an, the board gets an HIV report on a monthly basis, the board gets a discipline report on a monthly basis, but we don't get a report on when Officer Joe was called. And I think that will be a fascinating third report to add to the reports, the reports that the board gets. So we have a better sense. We, now we just kind of have this nebulous idea of when Officer Joe was called, but to get real concrete examples of, he was called on this date for this reason, and connect that to, connect that to the other pieces. So, so I know, I think I speak for the rest of the board, that we look forward to get, starting to get that, that report, and to continue to clarify the role of Officer Joe in our school. Does anybody want to add anything about that, their perspective on that evening, or...
I was hoping that we would see students come out to give their perspective. I'm always curious and interested in what the students have to say. It feels like we're doing a lot of top-down stuff on our end, you know, as the grown-ups and the adults, and we don't really know how the culture of the school feels on a daily basis. So it was really great to see some of the students come out, and especially some of our former students come out. So that was... So, that was, it was, you know, a room full of grown-ups talking about a very difficult topic, and I was really proud of our students that showed up and shared what they had to offer. Absolutely.
I would just add to that, that, yeah, there was like maybe four students, plus some little woman, I, so that was kind of disappointing. I thought, at least from my perspective, it was like, even though those students were really involved, and that was great to see. I did have a discussion with Amari, who was one of the students there, who's also the student body president at the high school. I had a discussion with her and Mr. Lassiter about trying to continue that same discussion, but in a student-only setting, so that the administration could kind of get some of those ideas and then pass them on, because it's a lot to expect, students to come out for two hours on a Tuesday evening. So, we talked about doing something during some of these like class meeting slots that we have, or doing them right after school, or at lunch, and so my hope is that kind of we'll be able to really make that happen, so that we can get, you know, perspectives from students at a time that actually works for them, in a setting that works for them.
That would be great.
Yeah. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thank you. Can I add to that or ask a question, I guess, or make a point? Can we make sure that that information, which is so critical, is shared with the Discipline Committee before we meet and go over kind of the bullet point list, so that we're really incorporating this kind of new data that I think should be included and right in there in that bullet point list? I know you said the meeting is, we're going to discuss that in the next meeting, but it would be nice if we could really, oh, I think it should be like required, that if we're going to get more student feedback, let's include that before the Discipline Group goes over this data.
Absolutely, I mean, I can make that happen. Sure. Great idea.
All right. Fabulous.
So, I'm sorry, Julia, make sure you get back to me on that, then.
Yeah, I honestly, it was like a very, it was an informal discussion with him, so I'll try to like follow up and see what, whether or not that is, it's actually, can happen between now and the end of the year, and try to make it, you know.
Shoot me an email, keep me in a loop if anything comes out of it.
All right, so if nobody has anything else on that, we all move to old business, and the one item that we have on there, as Mark pointed out, is our thoughts at this moment about the reregistration process. Do you want to?
You want to, Mr. Krieger, you said you were going to talk about it.
Yeah, I can kick it off at least. So, we met about the reregistration. The first thing we talked about was the results of last year's reregistration to students in every other grade. At this moment, I believe we counted 20 families who had not given us their up-to-date registration information, that is, bills, leases, the materials that are required for a student, legally for a student to attend schools, showing that they're housed, domiciled in Highland Park. And Scott presented to us the set of actions that the administration is taking, including certified letters and follow-ups with the families, phone calls to families, really to understand whether or not the families are living here or not, and just following up so that we do the correct practice and know that people really are here. And if you remember, last year, we did find, independent of this reregistration, a student who was registered and was not living in Highland Park, living in Edison, I believe, and the student went back, in effect, went back to Edison. Then, we talked about moving forward for this coming year, reregistration, and we will take the other grades, as Rob pointed out the last time. It's the same grades as we did last year, but we'll be getting the alternate grades. So, if we did third grade last year, it'll be this year's third grade, because they were second grade last year, and so on throughout the district. And the one point and one item of interest is the difficulty last year in registering. People had to come to the school during certain hours. We hired, we had to have some of our staff staying late. The idea will be to make it much easier. That means mailing in information, that means dropping off information at times convenient to families. The whole point will be to make it much, much easier for people to do it. So, those are the two real areas. How are we following up and making sure we can continue to follow up properly? And the, the second part would be to make it easier this coming year to do that easier for the, for families. And I do want to say that just one or two families sending their children to our schools because, for instance, our special ed program is so good, or our out-of-district placements are so good, can cost the taxpayers of Highland Park an awful lot of money. So, we really have to be careful. And that's really what we talked about, and I think, I think we're on to a good start.
Any ahead? No? Any questions, concerns? No? Okay. Anybody else have anything they wanted to bring up for old business? No? All right, so the only item we have on the agenda for new business is the procedure for expressing concerns about our schools, or, and/or an affirmative action complaint? So, if you were going to cover that?
Yeah, sure, I was asked to overview what the protocol is if a parent, guardian, student has a concern about something that happened at school. So, there are two things that I'd like to point down. First of all, it is very helpful for anyone who has a concern about a school-related issue to first address that concern, preferably with a teacher if it's classroom-based, or with the principal if it's building-based. Sometimes I'll get a call or an email from a parent or a guardian who has a concern about something that happened at the building level, of which I'm not aware, because I'm just not able to get a pulse on everything that's happening all the time in all the buildings. So, many times I'll defer that parent or guardian back to the, to the building principal. They're very, I find, they're receptive, in some cases, very receptive to working with people who have concerns, so that they don't have to take the time to give my office a call. However, if a parent or guardian is not satisfied with the response received from the principal, the next step is to reach me in my office, either by email or by phone, and those who have called me or emailed me, no, I'll get back to you right away. In some cases, I'll try to broker a meeting with the building administrator principal, maybe supervisor if it's a curriculum-related concern, and usually we're able to resolve the problem there. Now, there are times when somebody might have a concern that rose to my level, and we agree to disagree, we have a disagreement about the, what I propose to be the resolution. The next step is to air that concern here at the, at a Board meeting, to get the input from the nine members of the Board, if need be. If a parent or guardian has a concern about a curriculum-related issue, so for example, doesn't care for the texts that are being used, is concerned about the nature of a book, maybe it's not age-appropriate in the eyes of this individual, it would be best to call one of the supervisors of curriculum and instruction. And that information, I pulled up the website on the screen, can be obtained easily. All you have to do is go to District and Curriculum Information. When you click the Curriculum Information page, you're given the names and the direct extensions for the individuals who are responsible for curriculum. So, we have two supervisors, one responsible for Humanities. That includes World Language, Social Studies, and English Language Arts. So, a concern, a question about a book, the lack of, inclusion of certain things in our social studies curriculum, let's say, those questions would go to Ms. Fittipaldi. Questions about our science program. "Hey, you know what? Your, your high school science program isn't rigorous enough. Why can't you offer this additional course, or add this element to the curriculum?" Those questions would go to Dr. Nicosia. She also works with our Technology Department and our Math Department. So, that has to do with, that protocol has to do with concerns you might have about curriculum, or a building-related issue, which by the way, can be defined as disagreement about how a, how homework is assigned, how a student might be disciplined, the timing of an after-school event. "Hey, Mr. Lassiter, can't you make the evening guidance parent events at 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock? Because I don't get home from New York until 6:00." There's another way, though, to lodge a concern, and that is through the District's Affirmative Action Portal, and I'd like to show you where that is on the website. So, if you start at HPschools.net, go to the District page, we have a separate area just for concerns anybody, including a parent or guardian, may have about how he or she's being treated, or how his or her child's being treated. The affirmative action process is the same when lodging a concern or complaint for all parties, teacher, administrator, parent, student. And that is by downloading the application, and you can get all that information at the bottom of the website, and then filling it out and sending it to Jennifer Knapp, whose information is here, she's the Affirmative Action Officer. And that information, that timeline, procedure, even, I'm holding it up, it's a, this paper version can be downloaded as the first link on the page. Affirmative action laws cover mostly situations in which somebody feels that he or she is working or learning, or has somebody related to a situation like this in a hostile environment. I mean, the, some of the best examples are, unfortunately, when somebody feels he or she's being sexually harassed, somebody is being, subject to inappropriate comments that might have, specifically have something to do with a distinguishing characteristic, somebody's gender, or somebody's race, somebody's ethnicity. This applies to parents as well. Now, we've had at least one parent I know this year who's gone through the process. What happens? Well, Ms. Knapp conducts an investigation as the Affirmative Action Officer. Investigation might involve interviewing people connected to the situation. So, if a parent or guardian files an affirmative action complaint about his or her child that has to do with something that happened in a classroom, Mrs. Knapp might interview the classroom teacher, other students in the classroom. Then, the report, a report will be given to the parent, guardian, and there's an appeal process. If the person who lodged the complaint isn't happy with the outcome, the person can appeal. The appeal comes to me. I am usually the person who reviews the process. So, when I hear an appeal, or read an appeal, I'll do two things. I may open up the investigation again, do my own, and/or review the process from the get, to make sure it was done with fidelity, was there any impropriety? Did witnesses feel coerced, those who spoke to Mrs. Knapp in the first phase? I look at those things. And the third step in the appeal process, if the outcome is not favorable, my decision is not favorable to the party, is to appeal to the Board of Education. And then, there is a process beyond that if the Board of Education's decision is not favorable to the party. So, in a nutshell, those are the two angles, the two pathways somebody in our community can take to expressing concerns, lodging complaints. I hope I covered the bases. I, Monique, I know you and I have talked about this. You think I addressed the concerns people may have had that came to you?
Yeah, I think in addition to this, I think you covered this. The other concern was, what if it's not district staff? Let's say it's after-school program staff that we're talking about?
Oh, that's a great question.
And there's a complaint. Who do you go to in that instance?
So, if it's an after-school-related concern, it should first go to the supervisor of each program. This year, that's Linda Moran at Bardell. And remind me of the supervisor at Irving, I have a mental block, paraprofessional.
Isn't it Carla? It's not Carla Drayton?
Ah, thank you. Sorry? Yeah, for after-school. So, thank you. That might change next year, so if it does, I think it might be helpful for me to do this once a year. Maybe I'll just update everybody with names, and the Affirmative Action Officer changes. It'll be my yearly September new business.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
So, okay, sorry, so you go to the after-school program supervisor, who then...
And then, the next step would be to come to my office, not to the building principal.
Not to the building principal ever?
Not satisfied, correct.
And I'm assuming whatever, I would hope, whatever packet of information the after-school families get, that's in there, that if you have a question or concern, here's your contact person. If you don't feel like your concerns have been addressed, then you would contact Dr. Taylor.
I'll verify that. I think I can download the form from the website. I'll check it right now.
Right. Or if there's a parent who, because I know this came up too, who may not be comfortable going to their building principal if it's a school issue, you know, or, I mean, I know you would rather that they start there and kind of work their way through the chain of command, so to speak, but I'm sure you can give allowance for situations where a parent may, either through, because of previous interactions with a particular administrator, or whatever reason, may not feel comfortable approaching a particular school administrator. Is it then okay to say, "Okay, I'm going to have to go straight to the superintendent," or?
Right, right, right. And I do, yeah, you know, it's always appreciated when there's transparency and openness. "Hey, you know, Mr. So-so, I just, I have a problem with your policy on this, I'm going to address it with Dr. Taylor, just giving you a heads up." And I will always then follow up with the person, the principal in this case, this scenario.
And then, I think my last question is about the affirmative action process, because that seems to be definitely very formal. Is that like required to be reported publicly, what our, you know, what our number of incidents or complaints are through affirmative action?
I think that's public information. I can get that for you if you'd like.
I'm just curious as to know if it's required, or if it is currently reported, should we be, you know, thinking about transparency, and how many of these sort of pretty serious complaints are we getting, you know, in terms of the District or?
I don't believe the compliance is a requirement, but it's definitely interesting to get data that, if you'd like, again, you know, if you want to reach out to me by email, I can get that stuff for you.
Okay.
Yeah, I have nothing, nothing to hide. And I could, you know what, if I download the aftercare brochure later, and find that we're not including contact information or protocol, it's definitely something we need to include. So, I'll make a note.
Can I ask a follow-up? About that? One thing that was interesting at the Safety and Security and Restorative Practices meeting two weeks ago, was we heard from some current and former students who felt that, you know, some aspects of their school day had been, the environment had been hostile for affirmative action-related reasons, and maybe they don't feel like going and filling out a grievance procedure form, and, you know, going, is there somebody, would it be appropriate for them to call Ms. Knapp if they have a concern? Like, "I'm feeling in this class, I'm perceiving that this teach..." How does that work? What's the best?
That's a great question. Somebody who's well-versed in the affirmative action policy and feels like, "You know what? This doesn't quite fall into that category, but I had this little itch of a feeling," should go through the protocol I mentioned earlier. First, talk to the principal in this case, assume it's a teacher, that person that's concerned about. Obviously, addressing it to the teacher first is, is sued.
If possible.
But what if it's the student themselves?
It's hard if it's a student.
What if it's not the parent, the student, you know, maybe the parent isn't available to deal with it? If the student themselves want to go, we're talking about high school students probably want to go and discuss an issue that they're having, who would they go to?
Then, in that scenario, it's the principal who I think that individual should speak with first.
Is Ms. Knapp also available to students who feel that, you know, maybe there's a building-wide problem?
I don't know. To me, it feels like this should be something, if we're going to have an assistant principal in both buildings, it should be really clear to students that if you're having concerns with a teacher that you feel like you need to, you want to resolve, they should either be going to the assistant principals or to our now-full-time Restorative Practices person. Like, these are the kind of things we want, like, resolved, you know?
Right, right.
You know, like, these are the things we want, talked out, worked out, you know? We want somebody there who can help facilitate in a non-judgmental way.
Right.
You know, I mean, that seems like what needs to be happened, you know, needs to be happening, not this like, "Follow the chain of command" kind of, you know, like, I mean, I know that that stuff is there for a purpose, but like, when we have students who are feeling like they're not, they're not being heard, or they're not being seen, or they're not being respected, or they're not being, you know, we want it to be very clear to them that that's how we want them to feel, and if they're not feeling that way, this is the person you can go to and talk to about it confidentially if you need to, until you're comfortable addressing it.
Right, right.
You know, not like it's like you need to start some formal grievance process that's going to go up the chain of command, and, you know, because that's daunting and intimidating. You just, sometimes a kid just needs to feel like they're being heard.
So, to that end, I wonder whether the first step, actually, before going to say an administrator or supervisor, would be to talk to the teacher.
But sometimes it is not going to feel comfortable talking to the teacher.
I understand, I understand. I just feel like we shouldn't leave that out and just start to, you know, assume that the first step is to a supervisor.
So, here's the problem, but here's the problem, is it very often that that talk to the teacher is coming out in a way that's then being read as disrespectful, or as, do you know what I mean? Like, because I'm 15, I don't necessarily have...
I'm just saying, they need to be able to talk to each other.
Sure, of cour-, but that would be the goal, to go to somebody else who could be...
Right, the Restorative Practices Coordinator could then bring them together and help, you know?
Right. I think you're, I think you're putting too much maturity on us sometimes, you know. I think you're, I think you're putting too much maturity on us sometimes, you know.
Well, I would just hope that the first, that the kids should feel like they can talk to the person they're having the problem with first. And if they are not satisfied with the response, that the next step would be to go to building principal or to the vice-principal or, you know, go up the ladder.
I mean, but what I'm saying is, I'm feeling, there are many scenarios where that's not going to be the case, and a kid is going to want to know who the person is they can go to if they're feeling like they have an issue that they can't address. Or if they've, you know...
How can we, how can we educate them or tell them who to go to? Because it's not clear to me that a, you know, even a high school senior who's been around, you know, that they'll know that, you know, I've had this situation, I don't think that the teacher is respecting me. How will they know who to go to?
Yeah, I think it's got to be something that's addressed at the beginning of every year when the staff is introducing themselves to students.
I do think the assistant principal now being added to the high schools is going to change the dynamic. When I pointed out that you should, parents should defer to the principal, I'm doing so under the assumption that Ms. Brady has been too busy, because she's been, you know, between two buildings, to handle some of these issues at the classroom level, which is why Mr. Lassiter and so Sevier weren't handling it. But, you know, with the addition of an assistant principal now, one in each building, they might very well, next year in September, when I'm speaking to the board, be the go-to people first. But I do want to make sure that we realize Mrs. Knapp is not the person you would refer to unless you want to officially file a formal affirmative action complaint.
So I think this may also be an interesting thing as we move forward with the full-time restorative practices person and two assistant principals to really delineate those job responsibilities. Maybe what we want to say is, you go to the principal or the assistant principal if it's something related to curriculum or whatever. If it's something, your interpersonal, your interpersonal relationship with a teacher or another student or whatever, maybe that goes directly to the restorative practices person. You know, like, I think as you fill those roles, you'll have to come up with those delineations of, you know, and then explain that to the students and the staff at the beginning of the year. Because it may also be that a staff member is saying, holy mackerel, I've got this issue with this kid and I'm just like, I'm not getting anywhere. You know, like, I say something, the kid blows up at me, I don't want to turn it into this, who do I go in?
Probably helpful to put that in the student handbook. I don't see it in a job description, but definitely in the student handbook for middle and high school. All right, good stuff.
I hate to put the student reps on the spot, but I was thinking maybe we could just ask them, you know, basic question. Is there someone that already exists in the building that serves that purpose? If you're having a problem with a teacher, you know, do you go directly to Mr. Lassiter's office and ask to talk with him, or do you go to a guidance counselor? I mean, is there any kind of protocol that is word of mouth directed?
I, I don't know if there's any, I don't know any, like, protocol, like, I don't know if there's a set thing that you do. In the past, when I've had conflicts with teachers, for the most part, I've talked to Mr. Lassiter, oh, let's, for the most part, I've addressed the teacher first. When that hasn't worked out the way I'd like, I've gone to Mr. Lassiter on a couple occasions with different teachers. But I don't think, but there's nobody, like, there's no other person that I would think to talk to. But I also don't think most people have the kind of relationship with Mr. Lassiter that I do, that they might feel comfortable just going to the office and saying, hey, I want to talk about Mr. X, Ms. Water.
I think you also have to recognize our privilege as well, that we're like AP-level students who are able to communicate these kinds of ways, but it's a lot scarier for students who are not at that level yet. So I, I'm not sure that they have that sort of connection with, there are a lot of students in the, in the high school that have that sort of connection with the administration that would be able to communicate with them. And I think it's definitely harder for them to voice their concerns. And I think there's a lot of students in the high school that feel like their concerns wouldn't be heard by the administration, even if they were to say it. So I, so no, I don't think there is a voice for a lot of them.
And the thing that we're seeing is communication, right? I mean, when we're seeing things on a discipline report where kids are being disrespectful or whatever, they're communicating, you know? Like, we just need to figure out a way where they can communicate more productively, you know? Like, I mean, they're giving feedback, it's just not in a way that it's going to be heard or, you know, responded to in a non-disciplinary, you know, push each other away kind of way.
And if we're doing a good job with social emotional education, that is exactly what we want to help those conversations to happen in a productive way.
But I think this also has to be about, to the teachers, because I think a lot of students go to certain teachers. So that every, you know, most students have one or two teachers who they really trust. And so that's, they, and they sit down and they say, I had, like, you wouldn't believe what blah blah said today in class, I'm so frustrated. And they, and sometimes that's just venting and it doesn't need to actually, and it can be resolved as sort of like a, you know, get, just get it all out and whatever, but then sometimes there's a serious problem. And so sometimes teachers have this burden of hearing about their colleagues in ways that are maybe misrepresented and maybe not. And so the question is, well then, can they refer their, that student to somebody to talk to? Like, I think that's an important thing for teachers to be made aware of, because a lot of times they are the confidant, but they're not necessarily empowered to actually, but then to be the moderator.
It's a tricky spot for them.
No, and it's a, it's a tricky spot for students to feel like they're putting their teachers in, but then also to have the level of trust where you feel like, like, it's positive to feel like you have the level of trust to talk about that kind of stuff with your teachers. But it does place, you know, the faculty member in a tough spot. So I think providing a way for them also to be clear about what the protocol is and how to refer kids would be really important.
The student that stood in was referring to at the security meeting. I think they made it pretty clear at one point that they felt they had no teacher, other teacher, when they felt they weren't being respected to go to. And they, they said that, it was very clear. And I think what Scott said, which is a path or a set of guidelines for if you're having an issue, that you can go to someone. I, I would think that that guideline wouldn't be at all go to another teacher. I think assistant principal or, or full-time restorative practices person or the principal is a much better avenue, but I think everyone has to be, be told who that is and, you know, early on.
But I think the point is that that should be the person who deals with it, but it's not, that's not where students are going to feel most comfortable or most natural reporting the problem to. So then how do those, the people who are hearing the problem, like, how do they feel empowered to report it to the person who's actually, like, you know, capable of dealing with it?
Like what Julia said earlier, that there is a common trend, especially our school because it's so small, that students have really close relationships with certain teachers, and it's much easier for them to confide in those teachers. And I think it would be easier to establish some kind of policy that the teachers aren't input in a tricky situation where they're, where students coming to vent to them about a serious problem, and instead that they're able to like, follow up and actually try to help, try to help with the administration.
So hopefully the teacher could say, you know, listen, can I connect you with so-and-so? You know, who's a restorative practices dean, you know, she's right over here, blah, 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 blah.
Right, to say, you know, this is an actual, what you're describing, if it's true, is an actual problem that would, that, you know, should be dealt with, and this is how you do it. Not, and I'd encourage the student to actually take the steps, because it can be scary or intimidating to do that. Sort of help that through the, them through that process. And be able to distinguish a little bit between, well, it sounds like you should, you know, like, just go home and relax and, you know, because sometimes it's like, they assign this homework, you know, and it's silly, and then sometimes it's really serious. And so for teachers to be able to identify the difference and then, yeah, encourage students to actually, you know, engage.
I'm really hoping that this is the stuff that the dean of restorative practices would, would deal with, you know, like, helping those students navigate those situations.
Does the high school have a dean of restorative practices?
It's going to be a split.
Oh, okay.
I think the onus really should be on us at this point, right? That the, you know, the staff, the, whoever we bring in, the restorative practice person, because we know from the students who spoke at the meeting and from conversations that have occurred previously, that you're right, they don't feel like, well, if, even if you do put this protocol in place, what trust do I have that there's going to be a result that is actually attentive and supportive of my needs? And I just, that's not there yet. So I think the onus really is on us, instead of thinking about, well, how can we get this student engaged? How can we go meet that, those students where they are and really engage them so they know this is a trusted mechanism we're presenting before them? And maybe it'll be multiple points of entry, but yes, it's important to have that protocol there, to know that it's there, but there's, there's not going to be buy-in for that until they see it's working, right? And it really is something they can trust and valid. So I think that's kind of where our focus should be, right? Of really getting this, showing the kids that we mean what we're saying here, and this is, this is a safe route for them. And that's not going to be easy. It's going to take time and it's going to take multiple, I think, safe entry points for the students, you know, because it really, I think they're getting, they had enough of hearing, well, you know, we want you to come to us, we want to hear your concerns, because they don't trust that they're really going to get what they need out of that process.
Right, good point. I'm really, really hopeful that the setup next year is going to be far more productive for, for us to actually be able to show that that's what we mean.
Right.
You know, when there's actually more people there to bring those kind of concerns to, who can hopefully handle those concerns and address them in a non-punitive, more supportive way. I hope that's where the rubber starts meeting the road and...
Because I would say, I would just ask them, sorry, that also applies to the teachers in the buildings who are the trusted source for some students, right? Because we do know that some students feel comfortable going to teachers who are hearing them and listening to them, can relate to their concerns. And I'm talking specifically about students who feel like they've been treated differently because of their race or their ethnicity. And those teachers themselves are also feeling like, well, I know there is a chain of command or there's an administrator, but maybe they're not feeling like they trust the process either. So I think it's also about, you have really, you have some teachers that are there that are positive role models, that are positive sources of, you know, confidence, confidentiality for many students, but they're themselves feeling like we're not being encouraged to go through this process. So we have to engage them too, and not only just put the onus on them.
Is that, is that something that you've heard?
Oh, no, yeah, this is, this is what's, yeah, right.
Yeah, we heard that, we heard that, we heard that at the meeting from at least one teacher who felt that way as well, and it's, you know, you're completely right. It needs to be, and it, I mean, it is, I think the positive thing about, you know, for me, everything kind of goes back to, you know, what did we do with the number, the limited numbers we had? And getting, having an assistant principal in each building and having a full-time restorative practices person means that we can do this if we do it well.
Right.
And that's the right way to spend the money. And so, you know, Monique is right, people have to trust, and it's not only the students, it's the teachers. It's hard.
I was just going to add that one of the things that was so fantastic about that night was that people did get a chance in front of people that maybe they're not comfortable talking with or don't know, to kind of let it out a little bit. And, you know, whether they said it exactly the way they would want to say it, or, I think the point being, if they have more chances and more, more time to sit in front of a group, whether it's even a small group in the high school, where people can kind of share their opinions and thoughts and stuff like that, I think that would be helpful. The more talking that we can do, the more communicating, the better off we are.
And I'm wondering about follow-up. How can we keep track of all of this? Like, what can we put into place so that we have that ongoing conversation?
What do you mean? Can you explain?
So that we as a board know that we're moving towards better communication.
Well, I mean, as these folks come online next year, I mean, if you remember, it was, I guess it was last year, we got the presentation from the person who was then the restorative practices person. You know, we can just ask Scott for those kind of updates, you know, now that the restorative practices person is now full-time and has been, you know, engaged for four months or whatever it is, can we get an update? Can we get an update on the kind of work that they're doing, you know?
Part of their job description is to work in collaboration with the principal and guidance to collect, preview and analyze data for the programs and document the results. So it's, it's part of the, their overall job description, just to perform that task and then in some way get it back to us, I would assume.
That's right.
Right, so we can have that at all of this case.
Well, I liken this to having, hiring the supervisors two years ago, you know, putting that money into that, and then, and, you know, trying to understand how that would work and what we were going to do, and then we had presentations. And now that's a part of the system and it's working, and I think we have to do exactly the same thing with this. We have to have these new people come on and have them present to us, and then, you know, hopefully we'll see results. And I also hope for next year we'll hear from our student reps to see how that's going. It's one of the things we should be asking them as well.
Is that process started, ladies? What's, do you have a...
The application for the student reps next year is due on June 1st, and then we're going to be part of the interview process with Ms. Steinberg and Ms. Barca, who are the student congress advisors, and we'll be picking student reps in June.
Good.
How, can I ask about that process really quick? How important is it for you to find student reps that represent underrepresented high schoolers? Because it seems to me like over the years, we've had some really lovely kids sit with us and...
Particularly you guys.
Yeah.
Really, with great reports.
Guys have been great.
Fantastic.
And it's just, you know, it's a group of kids that's clearly very comfortable speaking with adults in a very, you know, frank way. And it looks to me like it's, you know, kids that are kind of designing their, their careers towards this kind of job, but it, you know, sometimes I think that we're not hearing anything from the other types of kids that are more like invisible, you know, for lack of a better word.
Yeah, definitely.
It's something to think about. Yeah, it really honestly hasn't been on our minds. We're, Liv and I aren't really, we're, have been asked to be part of the interview process, but we're not necessarily part of the search process, but it's definitely something to think about moving forward, we'll kind of consider it. It's definitely an important thing, so...
Yeah, because I, I know that during our tour, we met a few girls in the, in the hallways, and we spoke with Ms., Ms. O. about them. And she said, you know, these are the kinds of girls that they have a lot to say, they have a lot to offer, they're never going to go for that spot, they're never going to apply, because they don't think that that's for them. They just don't consider that a possibility. So, you know, that's something that came up in our tour, and I thought that it was worth saying out loud, just throwing it out there.
Yeah, we can definitely, I think some of the other student congress representatives will also have some interesting input in it, and maybe they'll, we're all from like, kind of different parts of Highland, part of the high school, so they, they might be able to branch out and help get some more people. So, yeah, we'll definitely bring it up at the next student congress meeting on Wednesday.
Awesome. And there was one more thing that I wanted to say about making our, more of an openness about the whole process and, you know, coming to us with complaints or coming to someone with complaints or concerns that the students might have, that maybe the sources of strength program might be something that we could kind of bake into the check-in process to make sure that, that students are going to those sources of strength students that are trained, you know, and speaking with them. You know, I'm having trouble with this teacher, I really feel like, you know, she's treating me differently because of this or that or the other. And I think that that's more possible, that we get students talking to other students about that. And so maybe that can be part of, you know...
And that's what it's supposed to do.
Right.
I mean, ideally, it's supposed to pull from all of those different, you know, little subgroups within the community of the school, so that it feeds in information from, you know, from all corners. And actually, speaking to that, I spoke with Amy Jacob, who, Amy Jacob Seville, who was the person who had originally brought the sources of strength program.
Two years ago, right?
Oh, far more, like when Israel was still here.
Oh, gosh.
Like, Amy and I met with Israel back then, so this kind of like, got its first little start then, and it's, you know, it looks like it's finally going to happen, but the idea was for me and Amy and Dr. Taylor to sit down and, like, really plan out, because Amy is, I mean, she's like all-in on this. She's trained people in this program all across the state. She's in touch with the folks, you know, nationally that run the program. She's trained, you know, folks to do this in dozens of schools. She's willing to donate her time for free to do it. So, you know, she is 100% committing, committed to making sure that we really get this off the ground this year, now that we kind of have the, you know, the push behind it. So, actually, right now, I'm the one who's holding it up, because I need to set it, put an email to myself and you and Amy to get that.
I was wondering if somebody had followed up, I know it was you.
Yeah, it's me, it's me. Yeah, it's me, it's me.
We are starting training in May 24th, May 24th to 25th. Kids are being recruited now.
Right. All right, so, I think we...
Kind of make a follow-up?
Oh, sure, 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 sure.
Yep, I'm sorry. Moving back to sort of affirmative action. So at that safety, security, restorative practices night, it's possible that I'm naive and sort of not aware of what's going on in the school, but I was shocked by what some of the students had to say. And I admit it was a very small sample, it was a couple of alumni and some current students that really felt like, like they had experienced a lot of hostility. I also heard from one staff member, sort of who whispered to me, you know, when the students were talking, about how, you know, these students, you know, they were bad kids, you know, they were, they lied and they manipulated teachers. So clearly, you know, that, that teacher wasn't working, or that, that staff person wasn't really working towards, you know, seeing the point of view of the students, and the students felt that teachers and staff weren't working towards seeing their point of view, and clearly, it was, there was a huge, huge gap, and a lot of resentment on both sides. I was particularly surprised to hear this from a, a staff person. It was not a staff person who was personally, oh, sorry. Yeah, I felt like there was a gap that needed to be bridged, and I, I mean, it's, it's good we have these processes for sort of students coming forward and making complaints, but I think this is another way in which maybe it has to come from us, we have to do something to reach out to them. I don't know, I, I feel like, you know, there's a sense in which we're asking the students to come and like solve this problem for us, you know, come to us and tell us what's wrong, and da, 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 da. I don't know, I, I was, I found it very kind of shocking and upsetting, and, you know, and I found myself hoping that this is not a widespread problem, hearing from some people that are, you know, that these were not the only students who felt that way, you know, I don't know. I, is this a gap that can be bridged?
Yeah, just to add to that, and to what Rob said earlier, that these were students who, as you said, were pretty safe, like they had already moved on, to at least two or three of them. Others were doing pretty well, right, and about to move on. So, you know, they felt pretty safe and empowered speaking out. And as you said, it's, it's very troubling, because what we know is that this, they are speaking almost as emissaries for many students like them who are feeling the same way, but are not empowered, maybe because they're not as strong academically, or they're not as involved in the mainstream of the culture in the schools. So I think that's even more important, that, yes, this is like an eye-opener, but it's really not just about those students, it's saying, hey, we're speaking about this broader, and it is a broader issue, it's not isolated, let's say.
They made that clear, actually, yeah.
Okay, good.
That they were speaking about friends and students who are coming up behind them, you know, younger students.
Right, that this is, this is current, it's ongoing, and there's a lot of work to be done, and it is about what, what the schools, the staff and the schools can do to really meet those students where they are and bring them into the fold.
Not alone if there's something we can do as a district to show that we're committed to this, you know, I mean, training...
I think that's what we're doing in terms of the staffing and the professional development and the, I mean...
Yeah, can we make sure students know that that's what, that's what we're working towards? I mean, students may feel like, oh...
I mean, that's what we're talking about doing for the beginning of the year, where these staff members are introduced, that would be the, I mean, to my mind, that would be the introduction.
Absolutely, so that is why I'm commenting, I mean, we are down this road. I mean, I, I think we're taking it gradually, can't do it, can't rush it.
I, I do think that, that sometimes, you know, I certainly do overthink things and make things more complicated than they need to be. Maybe it's something as simple as a gesture, that we send out an email to every student account, to every, you know, staff person, and say that, you know, we are committed to, you know, hearing your voice, and if there's anything that you need to say, if there's any concern that you have, as small as it might be, you know, there are people who are willing to listen to you.
Confidentially.
Confidentially, and, you know, if you have this issue, go to this email address and write this person an email, if you have this issue. Maybe it's just as simple as, you know, an email, a district-wide email at this point, now that we're talking about it, to just introduce, you know, this is a top priority for us. Everything that we do at this meeting that who knows how many, you know, dozens of people might be watching. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't always ripple out into the community where it's most needed. And so, you know, everyone has an email address, everyone has a call address, maybe it's something...
Text or something, no?
Yeah, maybe it's just be, you know, a very basic message, maybe that's a Honeywell address or, so, um...
No, that's a great idea, because as we were doing our tour last week, and we came upon that first group of girls who, you know, were, were very open about saying they had things to say to us, and they had no idea, what, you have meetings and we can come talk? And I think that's a great idea, it's an open invitation, come, we want to hear you, you're important. That's a great way to start the year.
Yeah, and, and you don't have to come when we're here, you can write us an email, you can, you know, give a phone call to someone, and just to give that, you know, open invitation, I think it's, you know, it's kind of Emily Post idea, you know, it's just like, come to, you know, this email address and write us a note. But these girls were happy to meet us, they were excited to tell us their stories, whatever they happened to be, we were like, you know, headed out, but, you know, I just, I think they had no idea that this, this was something they could do, they could talk to, you know, they didn't know who we were.
Most of the community doesn't know that this meeting is going on.
Yeah.
And doesn't know what we do. No, no, I mean it, I've given, I've kind of talked to friends, associates, who have no idea what the board does.
And quite frankly, I mean, we don't, I don't know that the solution is having students come directly to board members.
No.
I mean, it, you know, this needs to happen inside the, inside the buildings.
Sure, just opening the lines of communication, just saying, you are important, you're valued, and we're here.
Yeah, right, but that's going to, that's going to come from their teachers and the staff, not necessarily from us. I mean, our job is to make sure that those things are happening. Our job is to kind of oversee this process as it unfolds, not to open ourselves up as a, as a resource for a student.
No, I think you're misunderstanding.
No, I know, but I, I don't...
I didn't mean for them to, to communicate with us directly, I'm just saying, our job is to represent the community, right? And so, as a representative of the community, it'd be nice, of the school community, it'd be nice for us to say, like, you know, your voices matter, and that's really, you know, all I'm proposing. I don't think that we need to...
Right, and I think everything that we've done in terms of the strategic plan and the, like, the, you know, the path that we're trying to set is, is how we, is how we're doing that.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we, and our budget is how we do that, right? I mean, where we put our, where we put our money is where we show, is how we show our priorities.
Yeah, and we're doing it...
Does that trickle down to a kid in the classroom to know that that's what we're doing? No, but I mean, I think it, I think it shows to the staff, you know, I mean, we tried really hard when all of these really big things came up, in terms of, you know, Parkland and then the fights and then the whatever, to sort through staff's feelings and to try to meet them where they were, and to try to put things in place to address those needs, but without compromising things for our students, without turning our schools into a place where we were going to actually make it feel more unsafe for them, make it feel like they were under lockdown, or they were being, you know, scrutinized and followed, and, you know, like, I mean, we're, we're really trying to create this balance where, you know, both staff and students feel supported.
I'm not suggesting that we stop anything we're doing, I'm just suggesting that we send a gesture of welcome, that's all, you know?
Right, but again, I, I think that has to come from the staff, not from us. I mean, and, and I would hope that that's how next year would be opened up with these new staff members, that these new staff members are introduced as, you know, that's what we're here for, you know? The assistant principal isn't here to be the one to, you know, crack down on the discipline code, and, you know, a lot of these things are going to be rolled out next year.
But, I'm sorry, Darcey, but what I'm thinking is that that's not what we need to do, because we heard at that meeting that those students in particular don't feel safe with the majority of the staff. That's exactly what they said.
But, but what I'm saying is, new staff is coming on board, that would be...
But they're brand-new, they don't know anything about that, that's taking time to...
Let me just interrupt you for a second, Michelle.
Sure, sure.
I'm sorry, but you should know that every interview I conduct now, including the one I do with the physics teacher candidate, has me drilling down the vision we have for promoting equity. And I even specifically told the physics candidate in particular, I said, if you come on board, this is what's going to happen, you're going to do a book study around cultural response and this, I mean, we're inculcating that culture to people, even before they are offered positions in the school district. And I, I just want to say that the, the, the full-time restorative practice and two assistant principals, and the discussion of the youth development person, all of that coming out of the superintendent's office and, you know, discussions with board members, is us putting, while it's a large budget, a very limited amount of money, of, of money that we can choose to spend on something, into those programs to try to promote this equity. And I was at that same table as Ann, and the two of us were kind of sitting there in shock. I mean, Ann, you had to see your face, and my face was probably equally upset. We need to do something, and this is a start at doing something.
You're right.
And, and we just have to do it, we have to do this.
Can you talk more about what you told me about the physics teacher and about, was this part of their... I mean, so, I mean, I think it, it can't be underestimated, the, the fact that we put this focus on everything means that everyone that Scott is interviewing, he's looking for candidates with that same vision. We're, we're slowly changing the culture, I mean, these things don't happen, but we're slowly bringing in more people who share that vision, and that's huge.
So first, so the research experience this individual, who I believe is going to be the candidate I recommend to you, did at the School of Education at Pitt, he conducted a literature review centered around LGBTQ issues in school and cultural response and pedagogy, in order to write a manual for teachers. His research project through the Breckenridge Research Fellowship was around designing for equity by thinking in and about mathematics. His whole bent has been to try to, and by the way, he represents a minority subgroup, his, his whole bent has been on trying to encourage minorities and females to the science and math fields. Now, I could go over the 10 candidates for assistant principal, half of them are along the same lines. I mean, yeah, we are now looking for people who we know come to the interview, prepared to talk about this issue.
I'm, I'm, and I just, I don't want to belabor this, but I'm glad you raised that point about the academic side of this too, because, you know, this is all a part of it. When we, we did that walk, and as wonderful as it was to see what's going on in many of the classes there, what we still see is, and I believe it was the math resource class, what was it, 95% or 100% all African-American and maybe Latino? The kids see this, they know this, obviously the teachers see it to it and know it, so whatever comments may be made or not made, is all coming out of that, right? So we can't, you know, we talk about making the kids feel like they have a place to go, well, not really, not when you see these messages of, you don't belong here, you belong here sort of thing happening in the classrooms as well. So, you know, it's nice to know that we're really talking about bringing in people that understand the importance of building equity into our classrooms, because...
And that we're having the conversation about detracting, and like, all these things are going on simultaneously, and it's...
You have to, because otherwise, as the students see it, they're never going to feel like they're a part of this broader community, when you see that sort of segregation in the classroom level in terms of, you know, ability level.
Right.
And the, and the discussion of the honors option and the, and the hope and expectation that that'll be expanded in, in the future with the, well, I won't go on, but, but just, we'll expand that in the future. The hope there is, is detracking and, and equity.
Right.
Because it, it, you know, it's ridiculous.
And those conversations are actively happening at the middle school to change that, you know, how kids roll into the middle school for, not next year, but 18, no, 19, 20.
19, 20.
You know, so, I mean, it, if anything my five years on the board has taught me, is like, these things don't, you know, as much as we want to see it, like, now, it, it takes time to move these things, and if you're going to move them to make them, okay, I'll, I'll add to that, it takes a millisecond to tear it all apart, and it takes forever to put it back together in a way that's a lot better than it started. Like, this process is long and arduous, and, you know, quick fixes doesn't work.
And if we don't do it right, then when we're all gone at some point, it's just going to go with us.
Right.
Can't let that happen, because we know this is a cycle here.
Right, one of the first times, Monique, you and I started talking about this, and you, you pointed to your, someone that you know at Rutgers, who was like, oh, wow, so that didn't, I guess that didn't take when they did it, you know, 13 years ago or whatever, you know? Like, there was this push towards, so by the way, none of you, you all have to rerun for your seats, because we still have work to do, so don't get any funny ideas. You know, it's going to take sustained focus, you know, it takes, and this is the first time that we've had, you know, consistent leadership, we've had consistent, you know, like, all these pieces of the puzzle are in place, all the relationships are there, you know, where the administration and the board and the union are all talking to each other, like, all these things are really important, that's how you start to move the needle, you know? But, yeah, I mean, everyone, down to every kid in every classroom's got to feel like they've got a voice, and they have somebody they can talk to if they're feeling disenfranchised for, for whatever reason. We're in the business of being here to empower kids, so, that's the goal. Anybody have anything else for new business?
It's a great conversation.
Yeah, I'm glad we had the time for it, we had a, you know, a night with not a big agenda, and some extra time on our hands, so. All right, if no one has anything else for new business, we will wrap that up and we'll move on to public comment. I know you know the routine, Denise, you can go sign your name in, state it please for the record, for the board secretary.
Ms. Stainfier.
And your address.
Three, one, four, wait.
Q. No.
Right down the street.
So my first question, you guys, the conversation was very good, because you were talking about a whole lot of issues that were part of my concern. So, just bear with me, I'm, I'm trying to figure out what's going on for next year. So we have two assistant principals, vice principals, one for the middle school, one for the high school, that is correct. We are also having a restorative practices coordinator, who will be shared between the high school and the middle school. And, so one of the issues that was at the community meeting we had the other night was a youth development...
Coordinator.
Coordinator, I'm not quite sure what the person was called. So is that the same person as the restorative practices coordinator? Okay, so those are two delineated roles and two delineated jobs, and we are going to hire this youth development coordinator person?
For next year.
For next year, okay, good. And we are going to hire the restorative practices coordinator for next year, or we have one on board now?
We have one now, it's going to go from part-time to full-time.
Okay, and the assistant principal in either building will be full-time as well too? Okay, so who will be the major disciplinarians?
The assistant principals.
The assistant principals, okay. And the restorative practices person will be, re...
Should be, she'll do, he or she will conduct professional development, will actually facilitate restorative circles.
Okay.
And whatever else we ask her to do in the way, building relationships between the staff and the teachers, or the students, and students.
And the youth development coordinator will...
That individual is just there to monitor the halls and the...
The hall monitor.
Some of the soft spots outside at the end of the day, lunchroom.
Okay, so crowd control, sort of.
Correct, but will not, I mean, look, the job description's going to develop, be developed at, by the safety committee.
Right.
Be based on the input we got on the 24th, but I don't envision this person's going to be disciplining kids, definitely not going to be liaising with the local law enforcement, and this is going to be like a, a body in that hall.
What if he or she needs to contact the local law enforcement?
Sorry?
Why would they? I mean, any...
Why would they? There was some question about whether or not the person would.
If there's a fight and someone gets bloody.
Just answering...
But that wouldn't be that person's responsibility, it would be the responsibility of the building administrator.
Okay, great, thank you.
If it comes, if it's...
We just wanted to clarify that that role is not linked to the police department.
Okay, great.
That, that person reports internally, not externally.
Okay, great. This is why I'm, I came up here in part, because I wanted to understand what this was, because this is all different than what we have. So restorative practices is, is good, and I think, hopefully it'll work. Are, will there be staff training for that?
We've already, we're, we'll be going to year two of a three-year implementation plan starting next year.
Okay, great. And my next question is, so if that doesn't work, are there, is there going to be consequences for those people who don't, not...
So a discipline study group made up of students from the middle and high school, board members, Ruth, Monique, Rob, Magisino, representing the board, teachers, me, I think all the principals were there, has been meeting for days after school mostly, to develop a code of conduct.
Good.
So that the restorative practice approach, Dr. Ann Gregory, who I'm sure, whose name you may recall, she was actually present at the forum, she's an expert in this area, talks a lot about the need for any approach that focuses on RP, to combine both accountability with the restorative practice. So, it's not as if you do one or the other, it's a combination of the two.
Okay, yeah, all right, okay, that's good. The other question I have along, just along, I have, I have another topic I'm gonna bring up, but I, just to end this up. In all the discussions, I just want to be clear that we do consider the teachers, my own conversations with the teachers as a sub, as a parent, are that sometimes they don't feel like they are being heard. So in all of the right practices that you want to do, please make sure that you don't make them feel exiled, because I think sometimes they do, particularly around the area of discipline, because people get afraid to say stuff, because they don't want, they don't want to have anything misperceived. I'll leave it at that. Okay, the next area I, I wanted to talk about is regarding curriculum. So we had an incident in our town that was very tragic and a child died, a child was taken into custody and the parent of that child was taken into custody. I don't know if anyone's been at, released from custody. The whole situation is horrible. I feel that we, as a community, owe some responsibility to our students in terms of making sure this doesn't happen again. One of the things I think our community needs to do to make sure that this doesn't happen again is talk about sex education, which I think has been lacking across the board. You know, just tracking my own kids through the system, it's just been really, really not good and, and really not well implemented. So I don't know where it's at, I don't know what the problem is, but as far as I'm concerned, I know we didn't have it, but this needs to be out there as soon as possible. And I don't know what, I heard that there was some plan to do it, but if there's some holdup, get it out there. The kinks can work themselves out later, but it needs to get out there.
So I would love if you would take some time tomorrow, because it's late, to watch last week's, last board meeting, two weeks ago. I made about a 20-minute presentation about the state of health curriculum.
Scott, can we separate, can we do the same thing we did with the budget stuff? Separate that out and put it somewhere? Because I think this is kind of like a recurring concern that we've been hearing and, I mean, you know, we've had plenty of conversations around the board table about it. The Board of Health has been very focused on this as well. The whole K to five sex ed curriculum has already been rewritten and started being implemented last year. The six to 12 curriculum is being rewritten as we speak to be implemented next year. Some of those kids in the middle, absolutely, it got gutted. I mean, there were kids in the middle that have gotten nothing for years. So the fifth graders last year, I think, were the first ones in a number of years that got, you know, what we all think of as the traditional sex ed curriculum. It, it went by the wayside, absolutely. It was a casualty of the tumultuous period in our history.
Yeah.
But we're very diligently trying to put it back together and rebuild it in a, in a much more substantial way. So as your kids get into high school, it should be robust and better than it was before. The teen pep program is coming back. There's gonna be a lot of resources in the high school.
We're looking, we're bringing a sack back once a week. Substance abuse, so, you know what I'll do? I'll put something together on the news item section of the website tomorrow. It's, mostly it will be the presentation, but I think it's very informative.
I, I think, I mean, I, I don't follow every school board, you know, I-
Come on, Denise, why not? You're slacking now. You're slacking.
Well, because, you know, I helped, I was vocal in getting rid of the old regime. Okay, so I think that, that would be a really good thing because I, I don't follow it all the time and to have something out there that the community can click on, because, you know, honestly, it, the whole tragedy, we all own it and we really may need to make sure that this horrible situation does not happen again. It's, it, it, it's, the whole thing is just sad everywhere you slice it.
Yep.
So that's all I had to say and I thank you for, for your, I don't know, for listening to me.
Thanks, Denise.
Thank you.
In the intro between 6:00 and 12:00, as we are rewriting the curriculum, are we teaching to the existing curriculum that's in place?
We are. I actually wrote an email about that, so maybe I could pull some of that into the little news item I'll put together.
Thank you.
Clarify that.
Do you have any student involvement in writing the new curriculum? Because I know a majority of students have a lot of interest in this particular education curriculum, just because we haven't, we've had a lack of it, it makes all of us really angry. So I think possibly, I mean, I'm not gonna be here next year, but like, I, I know the Women's Issues Club and a bunch of other clubs and Saga and, and a lot of the social activism groups are really interested in having a voice in writing the curriculum, particularly for 6 through 12, so maybe possibly having a student liaison from, from, a representative from Saga or from Women's Issues or from somewhere like that to come and talk to you and, and maybe present how you could involve them as well in the curriculum.
Well, maybe what I could do is actually, after the middle and high school teachers write the curriculum, before we send it off to the board, we bounce it off the groups you're talking about. The other thing is I'd have to figure out, maybe I'll run into you at some point, talk about, figure out the timing. End of the year is already here, so, I love the idea though.
Mr. Presti?
Hi, Keith Presti, president of HPEA. I just, not to keep us here any later, but the board was having a really great discussion about stuff, so I thought I would jump in on that. I just want to say that, you know, I have the pleasure of representing roughly 250 really excellent, dedicated professionals and education support professionals that truly care a lot about this district and about the students and about your children. And so, do we all have problems? Yes, there's always a problem here and there, but I just wanted to say that I think you guys have a great staff that is really willing to do whatever it takes to make sure that the students of Highland Park are getting the best education that they can and feeling welcome and respected and, you know, this is re, the benefit of a small district like this is that we all feel very close, like a family. And I would also add that I think there, there might not be, it might not, might not be perfect and there might not be enough, but there are a lot of ways that students have to voice concerns and a lot of caring people that are in the buildings that they can go to. And I know that, you know, a lot of our teachers and support staff have great rapport with students from every background. Just being on the inside, I get to see that every day and I know that sometimes I was kind of hearing that, you know, the board doesn't always get to see or get to talk to everyone in the building and there is a kind of separate nature just in the fact that, you know, you kind of go through the superintendent and the whole thing and people can come here or not come here, don't even know that this meeting is happening. So just to provide that kind of insight from the inside, and I would also say that there is such a desire to implement restorative practices and responsive classroom in the, in the proper way and almost like, everyone is like, yes, we want to do it, just let us, like, give it to us the right way, let's do it. And I know that there, you know, we all know that there was a little problem in the initial rollout, but everyone is still on board and I think that, you know, is demonstrated through people wanting to be on committees, you know, our Safety and Security Committee blew up, like, people, 75 people plus came out that night from all walks of life. So I think, you know, there's a lot of really great things happening here. In any organization, yeah, there's gonna be one or two bad apples or problems that, you know, well, if they're highlighted, we'll address it. And I also want you to know that the HPEAs, as much as we represent the staff, really, we represent the staff so they can do what is necessary for the students without feeling like there's gonna be any retribution or anything like that. So I want you to know that we are fully committed to the students of Highland Park and we want to continue to work collaboratively, collaboratively with you, the board, the administration and everybody in Highland Park. So thank you.
Thanks, Keith. All right. That's it, everybody. Ready to go home?
Oh, I don't know.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.